Welcome to the August 13, 2012 Planning Commission meeting, in which we're unveiling the first, well, the first, the last, and every other final town plan that we're going to try to produce and move through the Select Board. This public hearing is the first of two informational hearings. It will be followed by a public hearing. And, let's see, it's today, the 27th, and...
Today, the 22nd is the next information session, and then the 27th is the Planning Commission.
Okay. So today's informational, and informational on the 22nd, and a public comment meeting on the 27th. Then, assuming we don't make major changes to the plan, it'll go to the Select Board, and they're required to hold two public meetings on it with at least 30 days' notice. So, this is the beginning of a kind of rigorous process of public review. And we have some members of the public out there tonight. Thank you for coming. And I'm sure there are many watching us eagerly. So, with that in mind, I'll call this meeting to order. At Carolina's suggestion, I'm going to move the minutes and the announcements up first. So, just wait one second for your presentation, Sue. Do we have any discussion about the July 23, 2012 minutes?
I move to accept the minutes.
One second.
Okay. Any discussion here? None? All those in favor of passing the July 23, 2012 minutes? Say aye.
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 No one opposed? Okay, so that passes. Now, Carolina has advised me that she has a couple of announcements. And, why don't you take it away?
I just wanted to comment on, there was a training for members of town committees and commissions and boards that was held last week. Ken Schneck, Select Board member, put it together. And I just wanted to comment, a number of us were there, and it was very good. And what the topic was last week was about effective meeting, planning, and facilitation. And, so, I just wanted to announce that a number of us were there. And for anybody who's part of any other town committee, if you haven't, they're going to do more. So, for the television viewing audience, if you're part of a town committee or commission, watch for those announcements. And, just, it was very good, I think. It goes along right with your sending, keeping us informed on what our duties are as planning commissioners. You're sort of doing a little educational stuff for us. So, that's great. And, my second announcement is, this Thursday, this Thursday, which is August 16th, there's a meeting for citizen input on the design of the Route 91 Bridge over the West River Route 30. There was some, we signed a thing, I think, a couple of meetings ago, to send, that we wanted to support for more choice in the designs. And so, they're actually going to do that. And, so, this Thursday at 7:00, at the Wyndham Career Center, which is out behind the high school on Atwood Street, there'll be a meeting for anybody that wants, anybody in the town that wants to go. And I'm under the impression that they're going to set up a small, little committee of local people to give them, to help them in their choosing. I don't know who those people will be. But anyways, people can have a chance to go give input this Thursday, if they would like. And my third announcement is that the draft copy of the town plan that we have, there is a copy of it, this is for the television viewing audience, there is a copy of it in the library for people to look at and read through, at the library. You can't take it out, but it's there. And you just need to check with the reference librarian, and she'll show you where it is in the reference section of the library. So, thanks, Sue and Rod, for being sure that that's there for people. And, again, just for people who aren't here tonight and want to know about that.
Now, the advertising's just at the library. So, now, the ones for the newspaper is going to be going out to the general audience? Is that already out now?
Yeah.
Well, for the plan? As far as with the...
There was a newspaper article telling about these meetings, but a copy of the plan itself is at the library. So that if people...
Right.
Or, there's also one in the town, in the Planning Services Department. Both of them, you can, is there any place else?
On the town website.
In the town website.
Right.
But, the actual hard copies at those two places, you can't take away with you, but you can read them there. Or access it on the web. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolina. Anybody else's announcements? I had a little visit with my neighbor, who tells me that it is a little difficult to hear us at our last meeting. So, I'm not sure if we're not speaking up, or if it's the mics, but let's try to be clear, just in case the equipment can't quite handle us.
That was one of the things they talked about at the training.
Oh, was it?
People that don't project.
Well, I'm...
Or talk with their hand over their mouth.
I'm sure that I'm guiltier than probably anybody at this trapezoid here. But, in any event...
[laughing]
I'm going to try and do that.
Nice choice, trapezoid.
Well, it is a trapezoid. It's like a trapezoid of town power.
Says we don't use meth in our daily lives.
That's right. So, okay, so having in mind that we've gotten our announcements out, what we're going to do now for the public here and at home is half of an overview of the town plan. The other half is going to be at our other informational session, which is on the 22nd. And we've each prepared sort of little presentations for you on chapters. And you'll see, in your agenda tonight, one column is bolded. Those are the chapters we're going to go over tonight. And then, we're going to try to do the information on the other ones on the 22nd. And then, on the 27th, is basically going to be a free-for-all. You can ask questions, criticize, discuss whatever chapter you wish.
Praise.
Please, yes. That's the whole goal of this statutory process.
Praise.
So, that being said, there's a little presentation for you that our planning office has put together. So, I'm going to turn it over to them.
Okay. So, we just wanted to start out with a little explanation of what a town plan is, how this one was put together, what sort of input was sought. Just, and then, I'm going to just go over a couple of demographics that are kind of the background to the plan. So, town plan has several roles. The first, kind of, the land use connection to it is that it's the basis for land use regulations in Brattleboro. So, it is not the zoning ordinance, but it sets the foundation for any future land use changes to zoning or subdivision regulations. And state statute actually requires that there be a strong connection between the plan and then what you implement. So, I guess the key takeaway from that is, once you have the town plan in place, then you begin to look at your zoning regulations and make changes so that they're compatible with each other. The town plan serves as the community's long-term vision, its values, and its aspirations. And, in that way, it kind of is used to, as a guide for decision-making. It's also an asset inventory. So, if you've read the plan, you'll see there's lots of places where we list what exists in the community. And that is kind of an informational source of information for lots of different users of the plan. Similarly, like, it's a guide for land use regulations, it's a guide to manage change within the community. So, maybe policy decisions that are made at the municipal level, it's a guide for those types of changes. And then, it's a reference point for decision-making. It's kind of background information, and it serves to reinforce policies and decisions that are made. And lastly, it's kind of a to-do list. Part of a town plan requires that you have an implementation plan. So, this plan includes that, and it gives direction for different town boards and committees as to work that they'll likely undertake in the next couple of years. So, a town plan is good for five years under Vermont statute. The plan that is in place now expires in 2013. One of the reasons for the five-year change, for it being valid for five years is that we should be responding to change. Things happen over five years, so it gives us another chance to look at it. With the exception of two master plans, the Putney Road Master Plan and the West Brattleboro Master Plan, the existing town plan dates back to 2003. So, a lot has changed since 2003. A lot of the base conditions are different than the way things were back then. The town plan covers a variety of topics that are laid out by statute, by Vermont statute. And, as you've seen, we'll be talking about certain chapters tonight. And, in addition to, you know, all the other things I talked about before, it is used in regulatory settings at the state level. So, the state's Act 250 and Section 248, which is the Public Service Board, kind of regulating energy, a town plan will be looked at. And they have certain criteria that they use. This slide doesn't show up too great. But, the plan actually dates back to, work on this plan started in late 2008 with a scoping group that was put together to kind of look at current conditions in the town. And from, that scoping group identified a couple of priorities for the plan. From that scoping group, the Town Plan Advisory Group was formed. And that was a Select Board-appointed ad hoc committee of 13 people. They worked as a subcommittee in the Planning Commission. And, they really helped shape the foundation of the plan. They engaged with various stakeholders. Some of them were the Department of Health, YMCA, BDCC, Youth Services, a bunch of groups in town they engaged with. They came up with the proposed table of contents, chapter templates, the way we were going to lay out each chapter, and recommendations on how we could enhance the document. Some of the recommended issues and goals that we ended up addressing in the town plan came from the Town Plan Advisory Group. That was, those include community health and wellness, ways that we can build a strong community, such as improving neighborhoods and strengthening businesses. So, they were really valuable to the Planning Commission as the Planning Commission had other work going on in 2009 and 2010. They were doing a lot of the background legwork. I would say mid-2010, the Planning Commission really got into talking about the various chapters at their meetings. Other town boards and committees played a big role in this plan. The Town Arts Committee, the Conservation Commission, the Energy Committee, all held big public meetings to help out and get feedback and provide direction for the plan. Other groups, such as the Agricultural Committee reviewed chapters, so, a lot of town boards and committees were involved. Some of the public involvement events that we did, I mentioned the Town Plan Scoping Group. We had a kickoff event back in 2010. We worked with high school students. We had, we compiled a large list of names from the events, and everybody would get emails about draft chapters and meetings. The planning commissioners conducted small group meetings. Staff and commissioners interviewed people for background information. We undertook a separate commercial land use project as part of this, and there were five meetings that were held associated with that. And then, in last summer, at the Select Board's request, there was a sustainability meeting that was held, and that was well-attended as well. So, these are some of the public involvement that we did. I mentioned that state statute lays out what a town plan must contain. And, basically, there's four process goals, which are aimed at creating a process that's coordinated across the municipality. It involves citizens, considers the consequences of growth, and encourages towns to work together. And then, there's content goals. And, these are the content goals that you see here. There's 13 of them. With the exception of childcare, we have, and the recreation, I mean, we kind of have, most of these content goals have a chapter associated with it. We have some additional ones, such as arts and culture, which isn't really on that list, and we have that as a separate chapter. We have an agricultural chapter. Forest is discussed in natural resources. So, that kind of provides a background to the plan. And then, there's some legal, there's some additional legal requirements that we also have to address in the plan. So, when you look at the plan, there's action steps. So, we have goals, policies, and actions. The actions are how we're going to implement the plan. And, so, there's kind of two ways. There's the regulatory, which is the zoning and the subdivision. And then, there's the non-regulatory. So, it could be infrastructure planning, it could be incentive programs or special projects. And all with the goal of creating a healthy, vibrant community for Brattleboro. James mentioned these, kind of, the adoption process that we're following at this point is, we're going to have another information session, August 22 at 6:00 at the West Brattleboro Fire Station. The Planning Commission public hearing, which is required by statute, is going to be here on August 27 at 6 o'clock. And then, after that, the Planning Commission will decide if they're going to make changes, and whether or not, at that point, they'll sport it onto the Select Board. The Select Board does need to hold two public hearings before they take action. And there is a 30-day warning. It's not 30 days in between each public hearing, but the first one wouldn't, you know, it would be at least 30 days out. So, that's kind of the process for adopting it. So, there's lots of opportunities to speak and be heard still. And then, James also went over this, but Planning Commissioners are going to speak to the topics on the left side. The right side will be at the August 22nd, but you're welcome to speak on any of the chapters if you can't make the 22nd. And then, are there any questions about that?
Just one process question. Michael Bosworth, when it eventually goes to the Select Board, what can they do with it? They could sort of pass it with no changes? They could deny it with no changes? They could send it back? What could they do?
They can approve it, or they can send it back to the Planning Commission for changes. I suppose they could deny it. I think it would be unlikely that they'd just deny it. I think they would send it back to the Planning Commission with, you know, suggestions for changes.
Just one of the process questions. It says, you know, every five years ideally, you're supposed to have a new plan. So, just, I think I've heard this before. Why, why has it been 10 years? That's maybe sort of normal, or what?
Um, it's not, I wouldn't say it's normal for this county. But, when you make, if you make an amendment to the plan, that stretches out the five years. So, say the base plan was adopted in 2003, then the Putney Road Master Plan was adopted in 2006, and that started the next five years. So, and then, the West Brattleboro Master Plan came along, and that kicked off, that was 2008. So, that makes it valid till 2013. So, just by the process of amending the plan, it starts the five years.
And, if I could comment, because of that, just to add to your question, Michael, we haven't done really rewritten the town plan in a good number of years. And, we've actually added to the process and changed it to make it more user-friendly and, just basically, to be more of a document that can be really utilized by different town committees, by department, department heads, and really, to be a working document that's more user-friendly to different, to businesses in town and to the public. And, I already, I ran into somebody today at the co-op who said they're already, their business is going to be expanding, and they have to come before the DRB, and they're already referencing the draft of the town plan to be sure that they have all their ducks in a row, so to speak. So, we're really looking forward to the publication of this town plan as, really, a much more user-friendly civilian, I guess would be the right word, just a community person, plan.
Although, it strikes me as being like painting the George Washington Bridge.
Yes.
If it took four years to create this plan, and you have to do one every five years, we'll be looking at this again.
We'll be stopping you.
Careful, Liz. Careful.
Well, I mean, as Carolina said, this is a complete kind of rewrite of the plan. I think it's not the expectation that every five years you have to completely rewrite it.
Yeah, and the, it's really an ongoing process, not to say that we're going to take another four years, but that there's an implementation section, and periodically, we'll be checking in on that. And, just sort of, and maybe in five years, the next plan will just be an updated implementation, and with just, you know, maybe some minor changes to each chapter as the universe changes, so to speak, and especially like economic times and things like that.
I think scraping the rust off shouldn't take that long, Nick.
Yeah. Yes.
So, you, I mentioned before about the bolded and the not-bolded topics. We're each going to present briefly on the bolded ones now, and then do questions on each one. If you're wondering about something that's not in bold or have a question, it's a perfectly good time to ask it. It's just that the staff is probably going to have an answer, and we might be a little less prepared. So, you know, don't, don't hold back. And, I think we ought to get started in energy.
I just have a few demographic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just real, real quickly.
Well, just let me say the other thing I was going to say, which is, what we're going to be doing is brief overviews. And, there's sometimes a tendency to have differing interpretations of brief overviews. And I think that we should try to be quick and let the public get in the game as soon as we can. Hopefully, they've had time to review this stuff, and we don't really need to go over every point of the chapters we're doing. And, you know, that gives us less of a chance to look stupid, too. So, it's a good all-around. Now, that in mind when we do start. I'm sorry, Sue, I'm pouring in on your presentation.
That's okay. So, just real quickly, some of the underlying demographics that we looked at, that the data is showing us. In terms of population, Brattleboro's been pretty static for 60 years. In fact, it's, oh, there's only been a fluctuation of 719 people. So, the 2010 population was 12,046 people. That was only an increase of 41 people from 2000. So, we think we're in a good kind of place. Lots of communities, especially in Vermont, were losing population during this time, and that's not Brattleboro. But, at the same time, we're not seeing exponential growth by any means. So, this plan takes the position that we're planning for slow growth. We're not expecting huge change in the five, in the coming five years. Unfortunately, we don't have any population projections. So, we're basically, 60 years have told us there's not been a lot of change. We don't expect much different for the next five years. In terms of our age distribution, well, first of all, the median age in Brattleboro is 43.2. We are slightly older than the state of Vermont average, which is 41.5, or median, sorry, not average, 41.5. But, that's pretty consistent with a lot of northern New England as well. You'll see a little bit in this, if you dig into it, is that we expect that there's going to be a significant senior population as the age 45 to 64 cohort ages. So, we're looking at an older population, and that number could rise, the median age could rise. And absent a significant increase in the 20 to 44 age population over the next five years, we might very well see a decline in school-aged children. And that's kind of what the school districts were looking at as well. Not, not a huge decline, but they're not planning for growth. And, we are having, the greatest loss that you'll see here is in the age 35 to 44 age cohort. There was 552 people less in 2010 than there was in 2000. And, that could have an economic impact because this is kind of the prime working ages, so. Only 1% of Brattleboro's population has a median household of over 200,000. So, that's our 1% in Brattleboro. Brattleboro's median household income is below Vermont, and it's likely that that gap has been increasing from 2000 to 2010. It's hard to compare numbers because 2000 had the long-form census, where you had a lot more specific data on income and economic indicators. 2010 uses a survey. So, it's a five-year survey, and the data just isn't as comprehensive, and it's, there's such a wide margin of error. But, our median household income in 2000 was 31,997. Right now, it's around 39,314. This is the 2006 to 2010. So, it's a plus or minus of about 4,400 for that. So, and again, this is the, the distribution of household income, median household incomes. And then, one other indicator that we thought was significant, again, the poverty data is not as good in 2010 as it was in 2000. But, what we do know from the schools is that all of our schools in the 2010 to 2011 have over 50%. Something's wrong on the high school. I'm sorry.
Right. That's over 50% too, no?
Yeah, all three elementary schools, yeah. It's all the schools. I don't know what I did there. I apologize, but...
I bet you it's the Brattleboro portion is over 50%.
It might be. All three elementary schools have more than 50% of their students eligible for free and reduced lunch. I know it does decrease in the middle and high school, and it's not necessarily because there isn't a need, but they just aren't registering for it. So, we are seeing greater need in our schools, which means there's probably greater need in the community as well.
How does that compare to state and national averages? Do you know?
I haven't, no, haven't. I know that, in general, we have higher poverty rates in Brattleboro than the state average, but I'd have to go through, this is from the school districts or school reports. So, I don't know.
I think the general, the general statement that you could make is that we're a little higher than the state average, or somewhat higher than the state average. And rural states tend to have fairly high rates relative to larger metropolitan areas. So, there's sort of a rural and urban areas. It's present fairly, at fairly high rates. Suburban areas, less so, but the gap is closing.
So, I guess the underlying demographic trends are that we're pretty static with our population. We think that there'll be slow growth. We are an aging community. And, it's, I don't know, how do I want to say it? Doesn't sound right to say, but we're, we're becoming a little more poor. So, in terms of thinking about it for the plan, when we're trying to put together ideas, you know, what, what can we do that's not going to tax residents, you know, necessarily increase what they have to pay in order to have services, so. And at the same time, what can we do to attract people and improve the conditions?
Are we done?
That's it, yep. And I'll turn it over to the Planning Commissioners now.
I forgot who's doing energy. I think it's Jim. You ready to go?
Sure.
Have in mind my suggestion. Have in mind my suggestion. I want all these people to be able to get to talk without us having to sit around too long.
Okay. On that note, have people, do people have copies of the plan or?
Unless they brought them, no.
Okay. Anyway, I'll just give a couple of highlights. The energy section was, of course, created by the Town Plan Advisory Group in addition to the Energy Committee along with us, so many thanks in particular to the Energy Committee. They've done a lot of work to get this to where it is and it's a very, very qualified group on the Energy Committee, people that are really in touch with what's going on. So, I'd say the biggest highlight is a goal of a 30% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by, actually, we stated as carbon emissions, we stated in the plan, but often referred to as greenhouse gas emissions and that's normalized for carbon, over 20 years, which is a, what I would consider a reasonable goal. I would say the, there has been a, and there is a goal in here to reduce municipal building use by 20%, 20% more, 20% reduction by 2030 in municipal buildings, which is less than the total of the town, you'll notice. However, if you read deeply into the detail, you'll see from 2000 to 2010, municipal buildings already had an 18% reduction. So, it's actually a 48% reduction in municipal buildings by 2030 from 2000. So, over 30 years, that's actually a 48% reduction, which I'd say is a really nice goal. I'd say that's shooting pretty hot, so I'm kind of proud of that. And just as a point of note, calculations in greenhouse gas emissions can become very difficult and that's a science that's still evolving. So, one of the challenges of looking at something like a community to say we want to reduce greenhouse gases in a community can be difficult because there's sort of three different categories of greenhouse gas emissions that we need to consider and that we can influence. So, the first category would be greenhouse gases that we actually can control as a community. And the only things that we can really control are the things that we actually own. So, community-owned buildings, government buildings, schools, government-owned vehicles, basically anything that uses energy that the community owns by the government are things that the town can directly influence. The next level of category two, when you consider a community's greenhouse gas emissions, is all the things that the community can influence but can't control. So, the town can have an influence on whether I insulate my house or you insulate your house or, and the community can potentially have an influence as to whether your home converts to natural gas, if we were ever to get that here, but they don't control it. So, the community, the government can't make final decisions, but they can influence that. So, it's obviously a lot harder to influence than it is to actually do something that we control. And then the third category is things that we simply cannot control. And that primarily is transportation, mostly going through town. And then how that all gets calculated is still out there being discussed by energy experts in the world. How one calculates actual greenhouse gas emissions, particularly of transportation that goes through a community but is completely not controlled by a community, such as people going straight through Route 91 or people going from, you know, Putney to Vernon or Putney to Hinsdale, we don't really, we can't have any control of that. So, these are, so that's a great goal and we, one of the things that we're committed to do, we've committed to working with an organization called ICLI, which I always forget, International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives is the organization. And they really set the standards, set all the different standards for how these calculations get done. So, you're going to see, if you follow this really closely, I don't know if you will or not, but if you follow this very closely, you'll probably see over a 10-year period, the way that greenhouse gas emissions are even calculated is going to change over the next 10 years. So, we look at our greenhouse gas emissions as a community, but there has to be a way not to do double accounting. So, it's going to evolve, trust me, but this is the goal we set based on the standards that exist in the country and in the world over the next 20 years. Another, of course, challenge with energy is it's very much tied to regional and national regulations. So, there's obviously a strong desire among many to close the nuclear power plant, but we are Vermont Yankee, but we, of course, are tied to what the federal government is requiring. Same is true with transportation. There are certain transportation things that we simply can't control and those are controlled at the state and state and national level. So, one of the influencers of energy specifically has to do with what we can and can't control. And these are things that we really can't control without, we can't control them on our own, right? We can't get cars to be more efficient than the federal government creates for standards, as an example. So, these are some of the challenges of that. Some of the things in the goals that we've set, I'm probably going over my time, so I'll go fast here. In things that we can control or influence is where we're looking here. So, we are, we have set it as a goal to take advantage of every energy efficiency program that we possibly can. So, anything that the federal government offers or anything that comes available at the state level, our programs that, we have set a goal to take advantage of all. So, right now, there's one that we've attempted to take advantage of called PACE, which I think will be one of the most influential programs there is to reducing household energy use. And we were unable to, 30, I think 36 communities in Vermont have adopted it. We have not, not because we didn't want to, but somewhere in the great detail of the writing of the various rules, something in the rule of PACE conflicts with our town charter. So, we have to wait a whole year for a bunch of lawyers to do a bunch of things for that to basically sort itself out, but we'll get there. Everyone agrees we should do it, we just need to work out the legalities to get it done. We also are going to create, whatever land use regulations that we can, we are going to make sure they are favorable to efficiency and renewables when appropriate. And everyone doesn't, sorry?
Goal number three.
I'm not necessarily reading across these goals, I'm just going over some highlights that I, but if you would like to recognize any goals, that's fine.
No, you include the others, just to promote the use of renewable energy in institutional, commercial, and residential settings.
Yes. Okay. Couple of real quick things. We actually, our sources of, our sources of energy, if people don't have this with them, but I'll just quickly review it, of our, we use 52%, 52% of the energy use in Vermont is petroleum and that is nearly all of it, 98% of it is transportation and heat. We are in a very unfortunate situation down here in that we don't have any natural gas. So, even though we have liquid propane, liquid propane is actually an oil derivative. So, we are completely tied to oil here if you, for our heat unless you use wood. And that is also going, you know, looking forward to the housing chapter, that is very much going to affect housing as well because it drastically increases housing costs because oil prices are continuing to go up. Couple of other quick ones here. The electricity that we use actually has very low emissions in this state. 98% of the electricity used in the state of Vermont is, does not put out carbon. Unfortunately, 55% of that, 55% is nuclear, so there's a trade-off there, obviously. No emissions, but a lot of danger. And these are the trade-offs that we make, of course, and the other, the other 40% or so is hydro, which we get from Hydro Quebec. So, we actually have very low emissions in electricity in our state, far lower than just about any other state in the country. And last thing, we use a lot, we have a lot of transportation emissions. We drive a lot. I think that some of that will definitely be helped by better standards that are coming up with energy efficiency, with fuel efficiency in cars. We don't have similar laws for buildings, so we take different routes to get there. That's what I have in energy. I know that took longer than I expected, but, sorry, James?
That's all right. John? And although I know you, can you introduce yourself for the people at home?
John Wilmerting, District 3. I serve on the Town Finance Committee and I'm also an advocate for renewable energy, particularly solar. I think in the last year's study that I've done for the Finance Committee about the town, we got to consensus on the committee that the town should become more involved with producing energy by renewable means. And this was one of our recommendations to town meeting and it did, it was, our report was received at town meeting. There was not formal action to approve any of the recommendations, but I think that has a certain gravitas. I mean, we've been looking at this very carefully for over a year, including interviews with our providers at CVPS, now Green Mountain Power. And I think in my own researches, I've discovered there's a sweet spot in accelerating, in recognizing and accelerating the conversion to renewables. I think we should be looking at community electric generation projects, partnerships, solar gardens, cooperatives, things like that. And this is starting to be done more in the state. The emphasis up until now, as you know, has been on efficiency and it's also been on corporations doing what they can with their, with their businesses and we've seen some remarkable and striking advances in people doing things in their homes, but of course, that's not uniform across the board. Not everyone's doing it. Not everyone can afford to do it. But I think there's immense potential in community partnerships where the municipality may partner with others who are investors or who can guarantee loans, as they've done with the Acorn Program up at Middlebury. And there are notable examples of the group net metering system, which we have in this state and they don't have in some other New England states, being used innovatively to put together community renewables projects. I'd like to see more of that done here and I think the report should explicitly recognize that this is something that we do have some control over.
Thank you.
Can I just mention, Jim?
Sure.
There was a New York Times Magazine article about that exact subject.
Just passed week?
Yesterday, yeah.
I think goal number, under renewable energy, there is a goal that says to encourage purchase of electricity from renewable resources. That is, that is in the plan.
But actually, the recommendations of the Town, the Finance Committee, is that the town will become involved in generating electricity. And there is actually a proposal being considered at this moment for that.
So, we do have under, so we do have that as a goal. We also have in the policies and actions, promote use of renewable energy in institutional, commercial, and residential settings, conduct solar access inventory of public and commercial buildings and rooftops and/or parking lots, and explore alternative financing for renewable energy. And I'm pretty sure we all, and we do, and we also address wind and solar and renewable energy in the detail here.
Okay.
However, I couldn't agree more with what you're saying.
Yeah.
And if we, if we should do more in this document, then, you know, I'm certainly open to suggestions for that as I suspect everyone else is.
I think there's quite a, quite a number of policies and actions in the energy chapter and it'll be a constantly evolving thing, thing, thing isn't the right word, but just constantly evolving. In fact, as more technology changes and, I mean, it really is there for the, to encourage the town to purchase electricity from renewable sources. And I noticed in the paper, there's some plans for small hydro and so.
For better or worse, we don't have a great wind situation here in this, in our area, but, you know, that still doesn't mean we shouldn't be pursuing things for solar and microhydro especially. There's actually a lot of opportunity for microhydro that's probably sitting dormant. And we actually have a goal in here of increased solar hot water by 10% by 2030 as well.
Actually, it's not legal to purchase electricity from any source other than Green Mountain Power.
John, you're getting the finger away from the BCT. No, you can talk. Just talk at the mic so that the people at home can hear you, that's all.
Sorry. Actually, it's not legal for this, the town or anyone else to purchase electricity from any source other than Green Mountain Power in the state of Vermont at this moment, at least that's what I'm told by people who are in the know.
Actually, I have a question for you as a Finance Committee member. Aren't we, are we investigating a community power, was essentially a co-op in our, in our community, to have a, to have a community-owned power company? No?
I think that's an idea and I think it's an idea that, that exists and I think it's a good idea, but the town has to carefully look at it because there are legal ramifications. I think, for instance, over time, if the town wanted to, it could designate a new entity of some sort, like maybe a public interest, not-for-profit utility explicitly to develop renewables. Now, we would probably have to work with Green Mountain Power. Right now, you can only buy electricity legally from Green Mountain Power and they will pay you for renewable-generated electricity with premiums that have been established by the state legislature. So, there are a lot of ramifications in that, but the answer is I don't, I don't know of the town seriously considering doing that yet in a committee setting, but it's an idea that's out there.
Yeah.
Didn't Burlington do something like this and get in a lot of trouble?
I know Massachusetts has a lot of communities that have, that have community-owned, community-owned power.
They did a community cable company with fiber optic in Burlington, but it was, they had a lot of financial problems.
It's a difficult thing to do, I would imagine.
Well, different state regulations make it different.
There is a, somewhere, I can't remember the name of the community, but there's a community in Central Vermont that does have its own car utility, it's more, and it's, but I think it is still constrained in term, you know, basically they're selling onto the grid that's around them and then, but they have control of the local billing. I think they, I mean, I think part of the problem here is that we are all part of a much bigger grid or a bigger network, which is for the entire New England area. And so, there's sort of, there's contractual obligations and legal obligations that I think are structured at that, at that level that make these kinds of questions a little bit more complicated. But I think there is a town-based municipal energy system somewhere in Vermont.
Is this something that's on the Energy Committee's plate?
I think that people on the Energy Committee are interested in other examples and case studies and so forth, so I think in terms of, in terms of the public information session, it's good to, it's good to track this conversation and then look at whether the recommendations that we're going forward to the Select Board with echo the sentiments that we've heard tonight, effective.
Do you have your hand up, Michael? Did I see that?
Just a short detail thing. I think in Burlington, it's Burlington Electric, which has been around for a while, as opposed to Burlington Telecom, which is different, which has had more issues. I think you might be thinking of Washington Electric Cooperative.
Yeah, maybe that. Is it a cooperative or, I couldn't remember whether it's a municipal system or whether it's actually cooperative.
I think it's actually called Washington Electric Cooperative.
But the disasters in the news have been Burlington Telecom, or the problems.
For financial issues, yeah.
I think there's some good old-fashioned allegations of illegal activity in that one too, Les.
You're gone, you know, a little bit beyond even the allegations.
How refreshing.
Well, we've got to be careful what we say is an allegation and what isn't, a public meeting. Anybody else would like to comment on energy while we're in here? Everybody ready to try on agriculture? Jim, thanks a lot.
Good job, Jim.
Who's doing agriculture?
Me.
Oh.
Just for a brief little bit of history, a number of years ago, the, there was a Vermont Council on the Futures of Vermont and they went around the state and got input from many, many towns, many counties, businesses, individuals, and one of the things they found that was the main, main priority for Vermonters was to recognize the working landscape in Vermont and that that impacts all things from agriculture to tourism to the economy. And, and the working landscape includes agriculture, includes forestry and those two things are, agriculture is addressed in the Agriculture Chapter, a little bit on forestry, and then the forestry is in Natural Resources of the Town Plan. One of the big things is preserving Vermont farmland, expanding local food production and consumption and export. and export of food products, value-added products from here, and creating diversified agriculture. And all those relate back to land use planning and saving farmland and strengthening, strengthening farms and supporting farmers in general as people, young farmers and old farmers, both. In Vermont, we're very lucky to have a farm-to-plate program. And the state, a number of years ago, did a strategic plan with setting up a series of goals all around food and farming. And it's very comprehensive. So it's really exciting to know that at the state level, they back and support agriculture and farming and what that is as part of our economy. And Vermont has always had a very active agricultural economy. It started in the late 1800s with the marino sheep. And it, it turned out that we were the hotspot in the whole world for high-quality wool that was sent to the mills. As competition grew in other places and marino sheep moved to the west, that wasn't as high here. And so then, the shift changes to dairy. But the aspect of dairy was butter. And Vermont butter was the big golden opportunity. Again, won many awards and was known. There was the butter train that went from St. Albans down to Boston. Little things like that. And then, as that market changed, Vermont moved into the dairy business as milk. And what I'm just giving you that little brief history is to show you the, the way Vermont farming and agriculture has diversified and changed and moved with the times. And it's also doing that again now. And so that's very exciting to me, and very exciting that we have a state, at the state level, that supports that. We have programs like Farm to School. We have Farm to Plate. There's Vermont Feed, which stands for Food Education Every Day. And they're doing work in the schools to involve kitchen, kitchen help cooks, parents in schools. And all that is in the, in the Agriculture Chapter as resources that we have available here, along with farmers' markets, community-supported agriculture, and many other things. So from the Vermont, from the chapter in the Vermont plan, we state that Vermont, Brattleboro values agriculture as both a source of local food that is integral to food security and as an important economic driver, and strives to protect, preserve, and expand existing agricultural businesses and lands. And so we take that right into our goals. And I'd say the biggest goal is really to preserve agricultural land and to improve access to agricultural land. And, and then after that, to maximize opportunities for producers to be able to access the necessary equipment and means to run their farm operation. That is, for many people, a difficult thing. And we have a, an agricultural loan protection fund that was set up in the 1980s and hasn't been used very much lately. And one of the things that we put in as an action plan is we wanted to expand that so farmers could use that in addition for protecting the land and expanding land, but to help them expand their business with any machinery or producing product things they may need. The Agriculture Chapter was, we got a lot of assistance from the Agriculture Advisory Committee on this, along with all the number of different inputs from the community that we had at those many meetings that Sue mentioned. In the chapter itself, there's a lot of background data and talking about the next generation of farmers that we really want to be able to support them. And just to note that in our schools here, the Farm to School program supports local farms and also does education right in the classrooms. Most of our schools here have gardens. Parents who, helping at the secondary level, we have the Vermont Career Center, Wyndham Career Center, that also has an agricultural offering. And then the Vermont Technical College and UVM go on at a college level. So we have a lot of inputs in place for education of the next generation of farmers. And one of the last things, well, Brattleboro, just as an aside, we're actually, again, very fortunate to have a very growing food infrastructure here. And Post Oil Solutions has been a mover and shaker in that for the last 10 years, and other organizations coming to follow that. And we're lucky enough, we can't govern what happens. The school district is a separate from the town, separate budgets and whatnot. And so we don't have a lot of say there. But they do have a Farm to School Coordinator there that's in the budget, and hopefully that will, won't get, get axed. It's a very good position that helps coordinate these various projects. And there's also through, I think it's through Farm to School, but I'm not sure, a program where local schools can use local produce. And there's a whole delivery process and an online ordering system so that the cooks can order, and then the produce comes directly from the farms through this distribution system to the schools, which is really exciting. And that is for a lot of different, not just for Brattleboro, but for other towns in Wyndham County. And I think Harlow, Harlow Farm is part of the distribution center they've offered to help with that. So these are really exciting things. And for investing in the future, which is also included in the goals, one of the things that's missing in this part of the state is access to resources for food processing and manufacturing, or storage, or distribution facilities. And incubators for people who want to do small food companies that need to have a commercial kitchen. So we need those kinds of things. And there is now a, a mobile poultry processing unit that's available in this area, but there still isn't most of these other things. And in northern Vermont, they have one of these incubators in the Hardwick area, an agricultural incubator that, where there's places for people to develop their products, in a commercial kitchen, what else? Anyways, so there's, one of the goals is to support that here in, in this area. Packaging inspection, onsite slaughter, and all that. So I guess those are, the, the goals are pretty, pretty basic and pretty simple. I imagine that over time, as, as we go through into the next town plan, they'll be expanded greatly. Food is, food and agriculture is really an industry that's up and coming. And it's considered the, when we look at economic clusters in this area, it's, it's the third one and a big driver. And will have more impact in the future as we look toward taking care of ourselves for food security. That's about it.
Thanks, Carolyn.
Thanks, Walter.
Public comment, questions?
Hi, my name is Cassandra Holloway, and I'm with the Brattleboro Area Prevention Coalition. It's a Wyndham food and farm network that you're thinking of that delivers.
Yeah.
And they're also doing a buyer's group up in the Bellas Falls area and hoping to bring it down here where people can actually order what they need, which is really nice.
Oh, great.
They're hoping to find it down here. And we're working with a healthy retailer program ourselves, trying to get, there's a couple focuses. One is for us is reducing tobacco and alcohol advertisement. But the other piece is to provide, have the stores provide more healthy food options. And so that's really important, as I'm finding that WIC is no longer, in like two years, is no longer going to deliver. So people are going to have to go to their stores with like extra WIC money. And so if they're going to a convenience store, San West Brattleboro, and that's their local food, and there's not those food options, then they're not going to get the food they need. So just something to think about as well, I guess, is how can the town kind of support things like that? Thanks.
And your name again?
Cassandra Holloway.
Okay, thanks.
Hi, my name is Drew Adam. I'm a charter member of the Brattleboro Ag Advisory Committee. And I've lived in town for 34 years. And it's been interesting to see the evolution of agriculture in my lifetime. All we had were dairy farms back in 1978, when I was here, basically.
Yeah.
But then you see the changing of some of these dairy farms into very diversified farm, farms, such as the Lilac Ridge, which now has a prosperous, prosperous vegetable operation. You see the Robb Farm, which was a longtime dairy farm, now raising beef and expanding their sugaring operation. The Dick Petrie's Farm has gone out, but it's now owned by a guy who's getting into diversified agriculture. So the Ag Committee, a few years ago, started a project where we were looking at all open parcels of land and identifying the owner and the land use. And that was kind of shelved. I think it's a really important document that we should continue to invest in. It's dynamic, it'll change throughout time. But it's an important piece of information that I think is useful to the town. It's useful to the agricultural community. And I, I would encourage the town to sort of finish that up and keep it, keep it current. The other thing that has been something that the Ag Committee has always wanted to do with the revolving loan fund, which only started at $50,000, but because of interest throughout the years has gone quite a bit higher, was to protect farmland. That was really what its main goal was.
Thank you.
And we've, we have tried to expand the purpose of that revolving loan fund. But it's taken, apparently, the act of the select board to change that. And so it's never gotten beyond committee. But I, I think it really needs to be, and parameters set up so that that really can be expanded, because it really hasn't been used in years. So I would hope we could, we could expand that use and reactivate the Ag Committee too, which hasn't really met in over a year, so.
Yeah, thank you for those endorsements. Those both are actually action steps in the plan to create an agricultural lands inventory or to continue it. And the other one is to amend the policies governing that fund. So those are there.
I think as a plug, the Agriculture Advisory Committee has several openings. So if anybody is interested in, in joining, we have one new member on the Planning Commission, Gary. But there are openings, so you can contact the town manager.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not here in the plan for the Ag, but I would like to encourage a more active Ag Committee that meets on a more regular basis than that. Again, for anybody who's watching or listening, I mean, it doesn't have to be farmers. It can be food activists, anybody who has any interest in agriculture and food and conservation in that way. And I think it could be a very exciting and dynamic committee, especially in these times. And one thing I forgot to say that you did mention, Drew, is the diversification of farming, and again, how that changes over time. And one of the things that Vermont also used to produce a lot of back in the sheep and butter days was wheat, interestingly enough. And, but those were not the generic hybrid kind of wheat that was, that gets produced now out in the Midwest in massive quantities. These were more, what do you call it? The old seeds, the old varieties that are heirloom varieties of wheat. And it's, now there's different people experimenting with that here in the state. And I know Red Hen Bakery makes a wheat, a bread called Cyrus Pringle, which is made of the Cyrus Pringle wheat. And that is an heirloom variety. And so a lot of our land is not suitable for large-scale farming like the Midwest. But what, what's been said is that all those sheep that were grazers, and as the Robb Family Farm has switched to cattle, and they're using their land for that, for grazing. And one of the newer, newer things in, in farming is grass-fed, grass-fed beef, grass-fed pigs, grass-fed lamb, anything. And we do have excellent landscape for that. It's just, again, a market, a place of diversification for farmers that they can supplement that, that dairy. Because the dairy industry, because it, it goes to a commodities market, isn't always the best and the easiest. It's not always a winning proposition for farms. So that diversification is important, and we do support that.
Any other public comment on agriculture? Okay. So I suspect we're going to have some public comment on the next chapter, which is Arts and Culture. Just looking out into the crowd. So why don't we move right along with that?
Okay.
Go, girl.
Arts and culture. Where do I start? All right.
Double mics here.
Oh, go on. All right. So some of the things outlined in the chapter talks about cultural facilities, cultural facilities, economic development. And, and the arts, it talks about what is the, the gray line of what is defined as the creative industries, music, dance, theater, different types of media, film, video, sound, recording, animation. Of course, that's not limited to. But one major, one major challenge we, we ran into is with the arts, it's not only that the benefits of the arts isn't always a tangible thing. It's not something that can always be quantified. And therefore, the, the value, you don't see a dollar value on it. And you can only say, oh, well, that, that's nice. But there is something to be said for that. And it's, it's an indirect value that, that the arts brings to this community, indirect, indirect, of course. So one of the major challenges with the arts is, well, I guess, the needs that, that are highlighted in this chapter, accessibility of the arts. Well, I guess I should step back and maybe I'll go to the goals. One of the major goals is to promote Brattleboro as an arts community. We already know that it's a vibrant community, but what can we do to further promote, to strengthen the already present vibrant culture that we have? What are the things that we can do to promote it? And how do these things get done? Some of the things that we highlighted were making it, make it, making it easier for the public to be aware of what's going on. How, how does that happen? Different methods of marketing? You know, how, how do you, how do you, how is the funding put in place? You know, can the town possibly contribute to making, making the arts more vibrant for the community? With some of the needs, in talking about accessibility, accessibility in terms of not just exposure amongst ourselves, but to, to potential, to potential visitors as well. We see the arts as a means of economic development in many different forms. And accessibility of the arts, I guess we're also talking about making sure that it's accessible to everyone, to make sure the youth is engaged, to make sure that residents of all ages, that they can participate, not just participate, but actually be exposed, constantly exposed to these different things. And this doesn't, this isn't just limited to performances and also as well as things like public art. So I guess one of the major goals to, to grow, I guess I could read this verbatim, promote public appreciation, participation, dialogue, and support for the invaluable contribution that the arts and culture makes to Brattleboro's economic vitality and quality of life. And in doing that, it's, it's hard to convince people who... what is the amount of contribution the arts is actually making to the town. Again, it's that indirect-direct thing, we all love it and we know it, but is there a way to quantify it? It's hard. So in doing that, this, the town plan calls for a way, a means of doing some asset mapping, trying to figure out, trying to be able to measure the arts and its, and its impact on the community at various levels. And, and what are the things we can do to enable the arts to become even stronger, stronger than what they are? This talks about using various types of marketing, various types of meeting to promote the arts, promoting the arts to other people and giving them tools, giving creative industries tools to, to become more competitive, competitive in a sense of being able to sell their works, to educate themselves, to, to make their product stronger. This could be internet-based, this could be literally the tools. There's a lot of overlap between chapters, you know, what, what is art? Is this art, are we making cheese? Are we, is it agriculture? Is it sculpture? I mean, there's, there's a lot of overlap within this town plan, and even the agriculture chapter, I feel like there's a lot to be said for the, the, how do you say it? Some of the assets, that's not a good way to say it. Vermont is known for its artisan products. Its, its unique and very passionate way of, of producing, I know it's not the best way to put it, but that is a method of economic development. That's a way that we can use that to promote ourselves and promote ourselves within our own community, to outside people, to potential residents. Maybe we can get another seven hundred and sixteen people to move here in the next year or two, or three, maybe? So, am I leaving anything out?
So a little bit of what you're saying is that arts is really a part of the economic, it's a cluster that's really prominent as an economic driver in, in this area.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and I think the chapter, I think the chapter, it, it talks about that, I think it all, it does talk about it in economic development too, but I, I think the main point that I, that I'd like people to get from this chapter is that in order to make it even more viable, I think the arts, creative industries, if they had tools, they'd be even stronger than what they already are. And this chapter does sort of highlight all of those different types of, of tools, not just funding, but actual tools. I guess that's about it. Am I forgetting?
Just an acknowledgement to the Town Arts Committee, back in two thousand and ten, they held a charrette, and so a lot of the needs that were identified, both capacity building, within the, within the artists and cultural community, were identified based on that charrette, so.
And the, this, in Appendix B, you'll find a list of the different, different organizations that have contributed to physical locations of these different places. Another thing that's really interesting about the arts is that there are so many volunteers in the arts, it's, it's incredible. And that's one of the reasons, it's, it's a great thing and it's a bad thing too. So to be able to sort of bridge that gap, it just goes to show how important the arts are to the people in this community. It's a, it's a powerful thing. I don't have the statistics in front of me. So I guess that's, that's it. Anything else?
I'm just amazed in looking at the cultural, Arts and Culture Inventory, I don't know if they have copy of that, but the categories, and under each category, there are so many different listings, there's music, theater, dance, circus, museums, visual arts, festivals and events, and literary arts, and other miscellaneous, just arts organizations such as Brattleboro West Arts, the Arts Council. And so it's just very strong in this area, and we created Gallery Walk, just things like creating Gallery Walk, which now other communities sort of take from our lead and do that now too, and that was one of the things, I think it's about twenty years old, and we're just, have lots of resources here. One of the other things that's a goal is to establish opportunities for Brattleboro youth to participate more in public art projects, and that is, I think that's a good one.
There's a lot of participation down at the Transportation Center, I don't know if you see the new mural that the children from, I believe it was a Gaffey Church, was it, or? One of the schools came down, or churches came down and presented a new mural from the old one that was up. I see a lot of vibrance, a lot of nightlife, I've come from New York, I'm used to seeing a lot of that, so now as I see it up here and I feel it, so I could truthfully say, yeah, Brattleboro offers, and shares a lot of cultural vibrancy, diversity, all over across the board, from what I see, and people are very participant from the arts community, be it entertainment, be it Latches, wherever it may be. So you can truthfully say, even during our Gallery Walks, you can see that, and it's just amazing to see those types of accessibilities that are there, and for children of all ages and people grownups that can take a part, participate. And you see, I think Elliot's supposed to be opening up supposedly a new art studio, from what I understand? I don't know if anything on that at this point in time, but when I was writing in the paper, I'm sure you might have all seen that. Yeah, from this point, soon as you walk from the co-op all the way up to pretty much downtown Brattleboro, you're gonna see life and more each and every day.
Public, Kate?
Kate Anderson, first of all, thank you for a comprehensive description of that chapter, it's thick and wonderfully done. I have a question about process. The Appendix B, the Arts and Culture Inventory, is probably a, an August twenty-twelve snapshot of the Arts and Culture Inventory. It's already, things that have changed since it went to press, and I'm just wondering what the process is for updating? Without, you know, without getting it into the process of a rewrite of the town plan.
I don't, I don't, I mean, I would think with an appendix, I, I think it would still be the adoption process, I'm not sure with it, with updating an appendix. I mean, part of the reason that it remains is, I think Brattleboro was probably one of the first communities in the state to address arts and culture, and so that, that inventory was kind of what was in the two thousand and three, or the, our existing plan, and so I think it was an attempt to kind of bring it up to date, but I, you know, it can get out of date really quickly.
My question, Kate, actually, is what, what is the use beyond what we do just with the plan to have an updated inventory? Because there are a lot of ways we could, we could continually update it for other benefits of other things besides the town plan.
Right, certainly. And that is, there's a real need for a, an inventory of arts and culture resources. That's something that I very much like to see. I think that it's, would be very important in the town plan just for referencing, cross-referencing, being able to, for instance, one of the things that has been updated is, it's not Brattleboro Arts Initiative now, it's the Latches Arts Initiative.
We could probably make that change now.
Yeah, but don't start because there's, you know, there's ten in my head at the moment. So, it's just, it, it's a vibrant community sector, and it, by definition, is going to just come up with stuff, and things will fall away very quickly because it's so difficult. So, it's, I don't know really what I'm asking for, I don't, I don't see that an inventory could be a completely up-to-date inventory. Maybe it's something that should be web-based and...
I think the challenge in terms of the adoption process is that it's clumsy and kind of slow, and it takes so long, just from that standpoint, that you wouldn't do it frequently. But that doesn't mean to say that the document can't live as a, a more of a living document in, in other places, and I, I like the idea of it being kind of web-mounted, so.
I, I would, I mean, if the community could go up with a "who," we could probably either use BAB or Latches' website as a place for it to live, and we could figure out who's, who's gonna be responsible for updating it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I'd be happy to help facilitate that.
Okay, so my, my only point really is that it's just something that is, is just changing, you know, every week, nearly.
I think we should figure out a technique for making sure that they stay up to date, or at least track the changes.
I mean, I've questioned whether or not it's worth having an appendix, I think it gives, I mean, it definitely gives the breadth of what goes on in Brattleboro.
Right.
The details might not be perfect.
It does say, in, in the, it says, "This inventory is intended to serve as an indication of the breadth of the art, breadth, breadth of the arts," interesting word, "organizations in Brattleboro." It's not a complete list, it says that right there, and it might just be that we add a little bit of verbiage to that, that it's a vibrant sector, which is constantly changing, and that this is a picture at this time for, you know, just so that, that comment at the top is just a little bit more...
Well, if you figure out, if you figure out where it'll ultimately live, you can refer people, you know, to the Latches website or whatever.
Yeah, yeah. And it is important to have that breadth, I think. A second point is with regard to the economic impact of the arts, yes, that is a very difficult question, but Americans for the Arts and the Arts Council of Vinom County have just collaborated on it, and that is being released, there was a meeting this morning releasing that information. It will be released, it will roll out in the next weeks. It's direct and indirect economic impact for only the nonprofit arts, not including any for-profit or any individual others, so it's very limited. To the question of the mural down at the Transportation Center, it is, that is a Town Arts Committee initiative, and that is with Molly Burke and the Art in the Neighborhood, and it is kids from Canal Street, it's under, underserved kids in terms of art education. So that's their, that's a terrific opportunity, and it's really charming.
It is beautiful.
I appreciate the fact that so much attention went to trying to define what the arts are. They certainly do include the creative industries, it's really important to expand the definition and take an accounting of all that is going on here. So for instance, with the, with the crossovers and the intersection of the different chapters with agriculture, there are the culinary arts and the food co-op, we had discussions with them long ago, before the building was even started, as to what the kitchen and the, what a culinary arts classroom might look like, and they also are very interested in that, in that subject. Another, so, the question of volunteers, yes, it's approximately thirteen volunteers for every one equal, equal job, so one, that doesn't mean one job, it means however many people it takes to make up one job in the arts, there are then thirteen volunteers per. With that, then, there's no tax paid on that work, and there's no salary made to spend. So there is a positive side and there's a negative side, and it is one of the most heavily supported industries in Vermont with volunteers, so I, I think that that is a question that really deserves some attention, not necessarily the town plan, but it's, it is a, an important question. Another point I would like to make, and not ask, I'm not asking for any change, I'm just making the point that when municipal facilities are discussed and accounted, it's important to realize that the arts have no actual municipal facility outside of the library, which is an important facility. But people tend to think that the arts have, that the arts use the municipal facilities, and they really don't. It's a, it's private nonprofit facilities that are then directed by the individual executive directors and their boards and their staffs. So this is, there is a question of access, in turn, not just in terms of being able to go to the arts and to observe the arts, but also to be able to do the arts. And that question of access is something that the Town Arts Committee has examined, and we reported that to the, I was also in the Town Plan Advisory Group, and we brought that to the attention of the Town Plan Rite, and it's, it's being examined, but there's no answer yet on that. I think that's all, thank you.
Anybody else?
I don't know if we can or should leave this, but I have seen, you know, we've been listed in Fifty Greatest Arts Towns and a couple other things, it seems like once or twice a year we get written up as a great arts town, and there's nothing in economic development or the arts and culture...
There's one in Arts and Culture, Smithsonian Magazine?
Yes.
Well, no, what I was getting at, I don't see anything in here about any proactive thing that we should or shouldn't do around marketing our own community to, to the outside world. I mean, I guess it's more of an economic development thing, but I see it as one of our, one of our best assets to attract that, that very group that we seem to be losing. I don't know if there's anything we should do with it, but we probably shouldn't have been at the meeting when we were discussing Arts and Culture, but I was probably traveling, and I apologize.
I think, well, I, I do, maybe it's not clear enough, but it does say something about a, the information sharing, maybe that's a little too geeky for to just say, well, we should tell everybody about our town, it should be more like...
Well, I guess technically it's the Chamber of Commerce and BAB that are really responsible to promote us to the outside world, right?
So, then maybe there needs to be a different...
We were just named like eleventh best community for...
Yeah, I know.
Right, and so who did that? Who arranged for that?
I have no idea, I have no idea how that gets out there, but I think...
But isn't it the first, the very first policy is to collect information regarding the cultural community's role in the economic vitality, vitality of Brattleboro, and then some of that is collecting that data and publishing it online or in a published directory? I mean, I think that's what I heard from the Arts Committee, was that that's one of the things that they really want to work on.
Right.
Am I wrong in that?
No, you're right in that. That was the Smithsonian, and it was a surprise to everyone, they, the Smithsonian Magazine, they just did that, most of them have come just as a surprise, but some are helped along the way with emails from those of us around town.
Think how good we'd fare if we tried.
Right. Right, right. The networking, it was meant to be within, sort of in, within the community networking, but I think that it could be applied to regional or schmore, and just would like to say, I love the idea of something proactive from the town on marketing the arts.
I think it's back to that whole mayor question.
I really love the, in the River Garden, there used, there's still some of them there, those panels, the, like, they're like trifles, but they're big, and they have pictures and little, little information about different area arts or...
They're outdated and they're a bit of a trip place.
Yeah, but they, they're wonderful, it's very, I realize they're out of date, but what, what there is of them is, is very, very vibrant and, and a great thing. I've actually thought that other organizations might want to do similar of highlighting, you know, green buildings in our town or whatever, you know? And yes, they do always constantly change. And yes, they do always constantly change, but.
Okay, any other public comment on the arts and culture chapter? Let's go to land use.
It's not going to be short.
Are we surprised?
And mostly because, you know, land use is very diverse, and a lot of the other issues in various chapters ultimately come to the land use section for implementation. So, keeping that in mind. Also, I think we should mention that, in addition to the Town Plan Advisory Group and all the various committees that Sue talked about, there was a subcommittee of planning commissioners and staff, and also outside consultants, HAWK resources, and of course, our experts, staff all had a hand in the land use chapter. And I think a lot of times, citizens have a difficult time in understanding what a land use plan is. And really, it's the way that land is used in the community, and how it's currently being used, and a program for its future development. Basically, the plan leads to zoning changes, which leads to differing public zoning decisions that affect the physical development of the town. And the Planning Commission was guided by, really, an overall overview of the land in town and its various uses for the purpose of affecting the general welfare. So, it's not any, we really tried to get away with, get away from any parcel-specific review. The existing land use in Brattleboro follows the land use character of many other New England towns, which is historic tightly-knit areas, followed by the more recent pattern of commercial strips and suburban development. And similar to the population statistics, the Brattleboro land use has grown very slowly in the past ten years. And one important fact that we all took note of was that residential uses increased in the last ten years, but commercial property decreased in the last ten years, and therefore, a larger portion of the tax burden is borne by the residents of the community. And so, that is a signal to concentrate and promote growth in commercial use and industrial The central idea to the future land use plan is that we should grow by investing and promoting established areas rather than in fringe locations. That can best be seen on this plan if we keep in mind the idea of growing along a north-south axis. So, if you look at that one, you can see that really, the north-south axis of Brattleboro is primarily the area of the historic settlements, and there is ample room within that corridor for development and redevelopment. And the broader areas of the township, let's say, the western section of the township would be considered the fringe area that we've been discussing. And so, while there is an abundance of land in the town, the fringe area is more likely to contain hazard challenges, such as steep slopes and flood-prone areas and erosion and so forth. So, the plan kept that in mind as a key goal. And again, the basis for these decisions is to protect the health and safety and general welfare, especially from flooding. So, that was a main component of the land use plan. Some of the actions or policies of the land use section are, first, to simplify the land use regulations, it's always a good thing, to implement flood hazard reduction strategies, to guide new and existing commercial developments, to enhance public access and views of the waterfront, and to provide land for more intensive industrial uses. So, as part of simplifying the land use regulations, here are several examples of recommendations that the Planning Commission has made. To remove the requirement for a market analysis for commercial buildings larger than sixty-five thousand square feet. And this requirement was weighed against, you know, we weighed weighing this additional regulation against the desire for growth in the retail sector. And another one was to simplify the zoning districts in the Putney Road area. And right now, there are nine zoning districts from the stretch of road north of the Veterans Bridge. And so, we recommend reducing that to three, and it'll provide everybody, including property owners, with an easier-to-understand set of regulations and greater flexibility to use their property. We also propose adding residential uses to the Putney Road area. Including a mixed-use and large-scale residential development as an overlay. We also propose a comprehensive set of development design guidelines. So, in addition to actually zoning regulations, there's more of a kind of pictorial guide to, for example, how adaptive reuse for office and residential buildings can be made while maintaining the historic character of a existing building. Another very important aspect was reducing the impact of flooding. And of course, that was brought to bear by the historic flooding from Tropical Storm Irene. And some of the changes recommended for general standards are adding to the site plan review a low-impact development standard for stormwater management. And this would allow for incentives in design and development for quality site design, and such as, if you increase the impervious surface, then you have, you're allowed to increase the impervious surface if you meet certain performance standards. Also, for flooding is to adopt falluvial erosion hazard regulations. That was attempted a number of years ago, and it's going to be revisited because of its importance to the community. Also, to regulate areas of earth disturbance rating and vegetation clearing, including the clearing of trees on slopes greater than fifteen percent. And again, that's erosion and stormwater runoff precaution. The next element is increased public access to the waterfront. You know, the town is blessed by a number of river fronts, and historically, not only Brattleboro, but most communities had turned their development away from the waterfront. And so, in order to acknowledge and use the waterfront as an asset, both as a natural asset and as a redevelopment amenity, the town recommends, or actually notes, that they're encouraging economic development in the downtown, around the Retreat Meadows, especially at the confluence of the West and Connecticut Rivers, and also along Route The next area is to improve the quality of commercial areas. And that's where the town hired a planning consultant to review each commercial master plan that exists in the town. And this report, which is available to us all, is called Rethinking Brattleboro's Commercial Districts Report. And the major recommendation of this report was that, in order to best achieve the goals of each of these commercial master plans, is to incorporate measures into the zoning. Because I think it was found that none of those master plans have actually been part of the zoning revision. So, that's on our implementation plan, to really make those recommendations, to make those plans an active part of the rules and regulations of the town. Another recommendation of that report is to provide a master plan for the downtown, because there isn't one. There's one for all these other sections of the commercial areas, but not for the downtown. One important quote from the redevelopment plan from the consultant was that, "We should not provide too much land for retail, because it will encourage sprawl by making undeveloped land more attractive to developers than the reuse or redevelopment of vacant commercial spaces." And I think we can all see that in the downtown area, with as many vacancies as there are, that that quote is very compelling for Brattleboro. And then again, taking the various other chapters of the town plan and kind of codifying into the land use section, is to support the rural landscape. And the way that manifests itself in our recommendations is that, in order to provide the land use base large enough for an economically viable farm or forest, large lots need to be created and maintained. And as it stands now, the minimum lot size is three acres, and that puts these areas and these uses at risk for fragmentation. So, the recommendation is that the minimum lot size be at least ten acres. The plan also supports conservation subdivisions, and the conservation subdivision just allows for more flexibility in development that would kind of gather open space as a whole. Then, to accommodate future industrial uses, there's two recommendations. One is to limit the types of non-industrial uses that are permitted, and the other is to increase the minimum lot size from twenty-two thousand square feet to a minimum of three acres. And so, right now, there's really a lot of really tiny industrial parcels. And if you can create a larger industrial parcel, then you'd allow development, such as a campus-like industrial site, to come to town. An example of that is the Commonwealth area. Moving right along, improved planned unit development regulations. Right now, there's planned unit developments in town, and these are all kind of self-identified planned unit developments. And they will remain, and they're primarily institutional uses. But the Planning Commission and staff felt that if we targeted certain areas, do we have a drawing of that, Sue?
I'm wondering about that.
That's the overlay?
Yeah.
The one they had before, to show the north side?
This one.
Yeah.
Yeah. If we targeted the areas where the town would like to afford flexibility, then we'd be in the position of directing that development, and that development would exist in accordance to a plan.
So, everywhere inside the tan fuzzy boundary, basically, is the area where a PUD would be permitted as of right. So, it's roughly over the east of ninety-one, from north to south or south to north. And then, these two additional areas that are, one is adjacent to ninety-one, just to the, just to the west, and this is the area that takes in the existing PUD of Delta Campus down to the south, which is where Commonwealth area is, up through the Osteen School and so forth. And then, this further one here is in west Brattleboro. This is South Street, and this would incorporate an area kind of wrapping around West Brattleboro Village. I should also note that, yeah, so, that's, yeah, that's about it.
So, an overlay just allows for flexibility of development in certain key areas and to promote a particular goal. And so, you can see by the names of the three overlay. One is the waterfront overlay, which encourages water-oriented development. The other is a flood hazard overlay, which has increased flood protection in the flood hazard area. And then, the planned unit overlay district is to generally just give more flexibility for larger-scale development or redevelopment. Lastly, there's just a couple of kind of zoning recommendations that are kind of at a, you know, the overall goal to simplify the zoning regulations and also to kind of clean up areas that are in need of attention. So, I've already mentioned increasing the rural district lot size from one unit per three acres to one unit for ten acres. And the rural residential would increase from one unit for every one and a half acres to one unit for every three acres. Rezone the commercial industrial land on the Frost Burge and Frost Place to multi-residents. And rezone the land as commercial office on Route Thirty to rural residential. And rezone the land that is commercial on Canal Street between Pine and Elm to primarily encourage residential use. That's it.
Kate, do you want to come up?
Yeah, I have a question. In the section, I think it's section three, improve the quality of commercial areas, it is stated in there to not encourage, not exact quote, but to not encourage development of added retail acreage. But then, you mentioned eliminating market analysis of larger-scale retail. Is that in any way in Commonwealth?
No, well, I think the first part was that we didn't say the first part of your question.
It's in section three, and it's about improving the quality of commercial areas. And it talks about not encouraging development of added retail acreage, so not using open space, I think.
Right. Okay, so the point there was that there's a lot of land in town, and that quote from the HAWK report says, you know, really, don't use virgin land when there's so much vacant land in town. land in town.
Right.
And so, but the 65,000 square feet rule would apply as we see it the most, for example, on Putney Road where there's the vacant Home Depot site and so forth.
Yeah. In fact, if I could just insert, that's the commercial district on Putney Road, basically, from Auto Mall north to Hanaford's on both sides of Putney Road, it'd basically be the only area where development exceeding 65,000 square feet, that's the only commercial zoning district where that's possible.
So for the layman, what I understand is that the marketing analysis would just be one method of sort of check and balance on development. And if it's eliminated, would that just allow for a little crack for the possible development in areas that are, that we really would not like to see that happen?
It doesn't change the zoning.
Uh-huh.
You know, that would rule, it's just one less hoop for potential developer to go through.
Yeah.
There's a flip side to this. So, I mean, part of the commercial studies indicated that this big box is not the trend in retail anymore. So the thought was if we drop this requirement for the market study at 65,000, but at the same time, up what they need to do to make it a more attractive development. So this was where the design guidelines come in. This is where the low-impact development, you know, ways they're going to manage storm water. So we're going to kind of up these other requirements. And so if we can get rid of this one and encourage the really high-quality development, you know, we didn't want to hit them with all these things and the 65,000. We felt like there's really not much risk in the next five years of a big-box retailer coming in. So we can get rid of that and then up all the other requirements on them to have a better development. So it's kind of a, it's one carrot that we could offer as we tried to put more sticks in place to have better quality.
Yeah. So the answer is that the idea of checks and balances.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I think our experience with town plan writing and with land use controls in other communities across the country is that if you can clearly delineate where land development of different kinds can be undertaken, you are under appeal. And in other legal settings, you have a better chance of actually having the restrictions or the controls that you do have being implemented and recognized. So to try and describe this more clearly, if we were simply to communicate that we didn't want any form of development of a large scale, then developers could argue that in fact, we are explicitly preventing them from conduct, you know, conducting the kind of businesses that they do. Instead of put this in context, if, in the far distant future, I don't think it's imminent, but in the far distant future, if somebody was to propose a replacement for the plaza that is Hanaford's right now, you know, if we were, you know, we could be, we want to be able to say, yes, you can, and this is how we would like you to do it, rather than no, you can't, period. Right? And so this is a way of ensuring that we communicate the message, which is, yes, you can, comma, but, and then specify some conditions that we expect to be met. And that would include something above 65,000 square feet. To put this in context, I think the Home Depot end of that development alone is, I think it's 62,500. So for instance, if the redevelopment of that entire plaza is bigger than, is substantially bigger than that. And you could conceive of that being done well and sensitively, or, you know, not so well. We want to make sure that it's done well.
Michael?
Yeah, Michael Busworth again. Just some interesting, specific proposals. Can you just repeat the zoning, the larger-lot zoning proposal of the two?
The industrial one or?
No, the rural, like the one that...
Rural, sure.
You mean rural residential?
Well, there were two, I think, where the lot sizes were increased. There's one that goes into...
Yeah, there's one in the rural residential district that goes from one unit for every acre and a half to one unit to every three acres. And then in the rural district, it would be a recommendation for one unit for every three acres changed to one unit for every 10 acres.
My other question was the idea of the planned unit development by right. I'd like to just know a little bit more how that would, how does that work? So the Development Review Board's not involved? Who's involved? The zoning administrator? Or how does that actually? I mean, you don't just allow people to do anything, right? So how's it work?
Well, you have to understand how it works now, which, so right now, if you want to do a planned unit development, there's certain districts where it's, you kind of go through the site plan review part of it, but then it actually ends up being a zoning change. So ultimately, the select board has to hear it as a zoning change. So what we're proposing is that it's, you still need to go through the site plan review part of it with the Development Review Board, but you never have to go to the select board. So if it's a development that you undertake in these areas, which they do have municipal water and sewer, and kind of go along with our north-south access type thing. So they've got good access by transportation, they've got utilities. So we've identified these areas as okay places to do a planned unit development, but you do need to go before the Development Review Board first.
So yeah, to lay emphasis here, currently, a planned unit development application in Brattleboro is as rigorous and results in the same outcome as a public request for a zoning amendment. And so what happens is that the planned unit development exists forever with its own set of, you know, subdivision and design controls, if that's part of it, that's specific to that area. So to put this in context, the Brattleboro Memorial Hospital is its own PUD, which means that it can develop in accordance with its PUD into the future, and it, you know, with minor oversight from the Development Review Board and the zoning administrator. But the process that they go through to create that or even to amend it is the same as if you were to amend a zoning ordinance like we did for West Brattleboro and the development of the rural commercial district. It's the same level of rigor, if you like. What we're proposing is a simplified version where it's not its own zoning change, so it had, so we would provide criteria within the zoning ordinance that would establish what you needed to do to apply for planned unit development, as long as you're inside this zone. And then we would have other land use tools, such as conservation subdivisions or something similar, for land outside this zone that would still allow for best practice for land use and land development. But what we're saying is that we are encouraging development inside these boundaries of the plant, including planned unit development, and we would establish clear criteria. So in that instance, as a property owner, you wouldn't need to go through each of the steps to get effectively a zoning change. You would need to come before the Development Review Board only to establish a planned unit development. So that's one legal venue on probably more than one session, but it would be one venue, whereas right now, it's, you would start with the Planning Commission, then you go to the Select Board, then you go to the Development Review Board. So it's three venues, and each one of those has its own risks in terms of, you know, sort of unraveling and going back to the beginning.
And I think for an adjacent property owner, I mean, right now, you could end up with a planned unit development that has industrial uses in the rural residential zoning district, so if it goes all the way through. So I think as a neighbor, there's a greater certainty of, you know, these are the uses that are kind of allowed around where I live. And so it's not always that question out there, you know, a planned unit development could come in and all of a sudden I could have industrial and commercial uses.
So again, it could be by right as long as it fit into the uses allowed for that PUD use.
Sure. I mean, it's always going to have to make some kind of reference to the underlying zoning district at the start. And I think in some ways, what we, the criteria would establish more guidance for the applicant than it currently exists. Right now, the way it works is you can propose a planned unit development on your own terms, more or less, as long as you get approval at each one of these stops along the way. It does have to refer, at least initially, to the existing land use district that it's in, but once you're established, you have quite a bit of latitude because it's your own zoning district effectively. So I think there's two separate layers here. One is the orderly, what they talk of in the statute and so forth, there's orderly land development, and that's really what we're attempting to attend to here. So that's kind of a legal, kind of a legal process for the most part that we're attempting to address. And then from another standpoint, we're concerned that we actually want to encourage more intense development inside the boundaries, if you like, that we're pointing to here, and obtain, you know, greater density and of population and hopefully, and certainly of use, and use other land use controls for the rest of the town.
Okay. I just want to note, I am going to get to you, we were supposed to be finished up with this at a quarter to eight. It's about 8:10, and we still have an application for a certificate of public good in front of us tonight. So I guess my point is, let's go quickly, but public, feel welcome.
As long as you're brave.
That's a nice way of pointing out to the staff that that was a really detailed and excellent answer to that question, but...
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, you know.
Yeah, all right.
Geraldine's very succinct.
Geraldine Wilson, small business owner in Brattleboro. So for the statement that reads, "Provided land for more intensive industrial uses that typically generate heavy demands on the transportation system." Are there intensive industrial uses that we would not want to see in Brattleboro? And I'm wondering if this statement might be edited to give some indication as to the kinds of intensive industrial uses that generate heavy demands on transportation systems that we would like to encourage as opposed to those that we might not want to.
Can you point to the page there, Geraldine?
Yeah, well, I have a feeling I'm looking at something different than what you were reading from, but this is the land use section, and it's 12.6.
I think it's page 126.
Page 115 in the book list that I'm looking at.
Oh, okay, under the, right in the front. Okay, so...
What has to do with the heavy truck traffic? We're thinking of like someone off of CNS.
If I could just answer this as quickly as I can, I think that over time, what we've come to understand, and it's specific to some extent to Brattleboro, but northern New England, is that we don't have, by definition, heavy industry, such as, you know, coal power plants or smelters or even large-scale, you know, slaughterhouses or something similar, right? So we don't have the kinds of things that you use zoning for to control against, which would be odor and noise and those other things that are associated with industrial activity that are, need to be mitigated. The one thing that we have, which is in fact quite similar to large-scale retail or commercial use, is in fact traffic, vehicular traffic. So the reference there, what we're trying to get at is, is that we want to continue to provide plenty of land suitable for industrial development, that we think that between federal regulations and contemporary practices, the contemporary factory like Commonwealth area has very little, if any at all, issues to mitigate except for vehicular traffic. So it doesn't produce odor, it doesn't produce noise, apart from vehicular traffic. And it doesn't have any other downsides that we're trying to regulate for. And we expect or hope that we get more of those kinds of industries, those kinds of businesses, perhaps even at a larger scale. Even there, we think that we're really trying to accommodate the traffic associated with staffing and deliveries and, you know, stuff being taken away. I would say sososmos is possibly, you know, the truck traffic associated with things such as the timber mills, both on Old Ferry Road and on Route 142 are probably the most noxious, and they're, because they're associated with Forest Street, they're somewhat protected. And again, it's mostly truck traffic that is the issue there.
Okay, anybody else on land use? Okay, so I'm going to move right along with municipal facilities and services. Compared to land use, this is something where we go from having a lot of specificity to very little specificity. And the reason for that is because it is almost impossible to propose things for municipal facilities and services without touching a hot-button political issue. So if you say something like, I mean, it's just very political by its nature because municipal services are administered by our political body. So if you say something like, I want to increase recycling, it would be entirely reasonable for a citizen to say, oh, well, why doesn't your town plan provide for pay as you throw? And the answer to that would be, well, it's been proposed a couple of times, and it has alternately been passed by two-thirds margins of the representatives and voted down by two-thirds margins in town elections. And we really have no idea what the town wants to do with that, and it's hard to address a divisive issue with specificity in a town plan. So what we try to do is think of the goals we want to address and leave it to the Select Board, who the town elects, to come out with creative ways to address them that hopefully are representative of what the community wants. So with that in mind, municipal facilities, it sounds boring when you say it, but it encompasses a lot of vital things in the community. The library, which is probably the place where rich, poor, old, and young congregate with some of the greatest equality in town. The parks, where it happens, the industrial league, the senior center. Brattleboro's lucky because we have private things like Gallery Walk, the farmer's market, the co-op, where people seem to congregate despite, you know, in suburbia, just sitting at your computer and going to Best Buy. But our municipal facilities are really the heart of the town. They have been for 50 years, they probably will be for 50 years. I use them, my kids use them, my wife uses them, families use them, old people use them. It's really important. And so we try to address those with a light touch, with, keeping in mind that we don't want to tell anybody how to do anything, but we want to talk about what we think is a good direction for things to go. Number one is we have this capital improvement plan of how we're going to address municipal facilities in the next 30 years. We have our five-year town plan. They're completely independent, which makes no sense, and we'd like them to no longer be. That's the same recommendation that the Finance Committee brought forth at the last town meeting. And it kind of makes sense, if you're doing future financial planning and future planning, what you're going to do, that there's some meshing. So that's one of the things we want to achieve. We want private developers to pay for the impact they have on municipal facilities when they build something and it screws up things in the town and the taxpayers would ordinarily have to foot the bill. We want to try to avoid that. Again, how you're going to do that, very divisive issue, probably very difficult, but if we could find a way to do it, it would lessen the burden on all of us who have no say from the people who are careless and negligent. One of the themes we touched on in land use is how to grow in, how to fill the space that is right now ugly, rather than to take pristine space. Well, I mean, there's no other way to describe, I think, what we're trying to do. Putney Road used to be beautiful farmland. Now it is no longer beautiful farmland, and some of... Now, it is no longer beautiful farmland, and some of it, uh, you know, are things like an out-of-business movie theater, um, the remnants, a lot where the Candlewood Bowling Alley once stood. Things like that, that are ripe for development and they're not really gonna change the character. We don't wanna change the character of a place like the road out to West Browneboro where there's still some, uh, modicum of, of sort of that country feel. We even invented that great zoning term for it, which I forgot. We wanna address how, what is it?
Rural commercial.
Rural commercial, right. Uh, we wanna try to address stormwater in a similar way to the way we do, address wastewater. Right now, uh, there are two separate systems. Stormwater picks up whatever chemicals it can, goes right down, and we throw it in the river. Because we're a small town, we get away with that. It would be nice if we didn't do that. And, uh, any modernization is gonna be a burden on someone. And some municipalities, they have like a stormwater utility. We'd like to consider doing that. The police station and fire department, one of which building houses this meeting as well, which I think is about seventy-eight degrees right now, but it might just be my suit. Uh, they, uh, need expansion in the case of the fire department, or modernization in the case of this building, in particular, the police department. Pretty indisputable in light of the things that go on in this town, whether it's murders or big buildings burning down and leaving a huge piece of downtown vacant. That these are essential municipal services, um, and that not paying attention to them can change the character of our town in huge ways. Again, how is this gonna happen? Well, it's gonna be a fight, and there's gonna be a lot of pissed-off people. And we don't purport to know what the solution is. But, we know that something has to be done. We wanna try to open up public facilities like schools to private groups so that we don't have wasted space that taxpayer dollars maintain. That is not, uh, that can't be utilized by people looking for space. We wanna integrate our parks together in some kind of unified vision. It just would make things more efficient and standardized. We can do that with a master plan, the same way we do with West Browneboro, Putney Road, maybe soon the downtown. And give our Parks Department some kind of guideline so that they can have master maintenance systems, things like that. And we want to keep our library going at the high level it is. My wife came from Long Island and was blown away by what we have here in such a small community, which is comparable to hers, whose budget is probably ungodly compared to ours. And, uh, you know, the people there are constantly fighting to keep the service up. And we want to ensure that fiber optics get in there so the computers are still a good resource for people who can't afford them, which is a decent amount, actually. To keep the digital catalog expanding as it gets harder and harder to maintain real stacks. And, uh, to keep that as a place where people can meet and learn and, and sort of keep the intellectual vibrancy in this town. I know a Rhodes Scholar who works there sometimes. And, uh, you know, there are homeless people who go there to get on their computer and figure out how to use public services. So, it, it, it really runs the gamut. And, um, that's, those are our general, basic, flip-floppy ideas. If you wanna be cynical, you say, "Well, we have no idea how to do them," and that's true. But, but, I, I think what we're trying to do is figure out things that the community agrees want, we wanna happen to our municipal facilities, and, uh, that's what we've tried to do. So, any questions, comments? Michael? Oh, sorry. Hey, Michael, I don't think she's spoken yet.
No, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Martha.
I'm just thinking, you know, just even distributional.
I see this as a sort of question and answer interaction.
Shoot.
I'm gonna state your name and...
Oh, I'm sorry, Martha Graham. Um, my interest is that in ten point nine point two, "Support civic and gardening clubs slash organizations in beautification projects."
How could I not mention that, I'm sorry? Because one of our own planning commissioners participates in your beautification project. I should have mentioned that. I'm gonna have to punch it, I've been up, I got up early this morning.
I'm mentioning it now. And then, at ninety-nine, we have page ninety-nine. "Maintaining and programming, oh, um, about many parks that provide green space for neighbors to gather and socialize. And some places are still under play. Maintaining and programming these spaces can be challenging, given budget limitations. Community involvement is needed to help beautify these spaces. Presently, service organizations and other groups have taken on projects to improve public spaces. This plan is appreciative and supportive of the voluntary efforts that are undertaken to beautify public spaces." Now, since I heard what you said about keeping things rather vague in this chapter because of the loaded political nature of so much of what's in it, I do feel a little bit clearer on why, to me, the language here is really quite vague. But, I would like to suggest that, um, uh, community activity and volunteer work to, um, keep up and, uh, enhance the, the green spaces with gardening and landscaping is pretty non-controversial, uh, as far as anyone agreeing on what ought to be done, given resources with which to do it. You can have arguments about aesthetics, which we have, um, and will have more of. But, other than that, um, it doesn't seem to be quite as, perhaps as hot-button as some of the other issues that were mentioned. And in view of that, I, I would like to make the point, or to act, to ask, I guess, that, um, some language could possibly be put in here affirming the, the value of volunteer efforts around, um, outdoor landscaping and gardening as strengthening and building community. And, in other words, people, when people get, of all ages, children, elderly, the disabled, you name it, when they come together to plant a garden, um, and when all different parts of the community come together to make something happen, where the businesses are contributing and everybody's, you know, stepping up, it really creates strong bonds, um, that strengthen community that would not otherwise happen. Um, and that's another reason why these kinds of projects should be supported. And then, in general, I, I guess I would like to see, um, if I could have whatever I want as an advocate for this piece of town, um, quality of life. What is really meant by supporting these efforts? It says, "The town plan is appreciative and supportive of these efforts." On page ninety-nine, at, on page ninety, under ten point nine, it simply says, "Support." Could that, the language be more specific in terms of, um, kinds of support that would be suggested? Even if that only meant, um, collaboration and cooperation, uh, working with town departments? A, a, a better process, or an established procedure to do that? More specific and perhaps stronger language than is, is here now, since this is a, as I see it, a fairly non-political area.
Sure. Thank you, Martha. Now, I just got, uh, the signal from our camera lady that we have about nine minutes. We have to do, um, this certificate of public good application. Do we have time to do it, Rod?
Yes.
I would suggest that we probably all agree with Martha. Is that fair?
Yes.
Could we authorize the planning, a staff, to pump that sentence up a little?
At ten point nine point two and at page...
It can't, it can't happen till after the public hearing because we've warned this as...
This text, but we can do it, we've made...
Eventually, once we get past there, to, to get a little more focus on what she advocates, which I agree, we're all for. Michael? I, I really want, I, I'm sorry, I hate stymying public comment, but please make it fast.
Well, what I suggest then is that the next session on the twenty-second, maybe we continue with the municipal facilities and services?
That's a great idea.
And, uh, what, what I had to say has to do with that as well. It's something that actually crosses several chapters.
Do you think you can make it to that meeting?
Yeah, I'll be there.
Okay.
It's in our neighborhood.
Do you think you'll remember your question?
Oh, yes, I will.
Okay. Do we note that on the minutes?
Yep.
Uh, so, just, uh, although the West Browneboro Common made it to the map parcel recreation, it actually didn't make it to table ten-one, and I don't know why. And we've held two village days there the last couple of years, so, I would like to...
What, didn't make it there?
The West Browneboro Common. So, for tonight, it's...
I'm, I'm sure that we can all agree that we should add the West Browneboro Common, too, once we get past the public hearing. Is that true, fellow commissioners?
Is that actually a, I'm sure, yeah. That's town don?
Yes.
Okay. So, we have the unanimous feeling there. Michael, I'll, I'll remember to start with you next time. We'll recess on municipal facilities, I took way too long on that, sorry, guys. I said I wouldn't. I get kinda romantic when I talk about the library, um, so...
It's a man after my heart.
Yeah, right. So, uh, let's hear the application for a certificate of public good for a net-meeted powered system for Brian Frichette of three eighty-seven Meadow Brook Road.
Thank you to the public for coming.
Yes, thank you. Camera person, how much time do we have?
Five minutes.
Okay. Let's see how efficient this town government really is.
Okay. Let me refer you to the memo that accompanies this application. So, under streamlined review processes from the Public Service Board, photovoltaic installations, um, between five kilowatts AC and a hundred and fifty kilowatts AC that are freestanding, that is, they're not attached to the roof of an existing structure, are, um, considered open to review by, um, local communities with respect to, uh, one criteria under the town plan, which references, uh, the designation of conservation lands. And it falls to either or, the Select Board or the Planning Commission, to undertake this review in case the municipal, the municipality would like to comment on proceedings at the Public Service Board.
Didn't we do this once before for Michael Bosworth's? We hadn't...
Thank you.
Yep.
Were you and I the only ones there?
I was, sir.
Yeah, we did this...
How does this change what currently exists?
This, this has been in place for a while now, but we've, and we're having, we've had a handful of applications that affect it. And it's always been a question of whether it's, um, handled by the Select Board alone directly, or whether it would be the Planning Commission and the Select Board, or the Planning Commission alone. At the last Select Board meeting, uh, I was able to get a commitment from the Select Board that in all, all cases, including this one, and all those in the future, it would just be the Planning Commission that reviews and comments if appropriate. As it turns out, Mr. Frichette's property is not affected by any conservation restrictions, and so therefore, we have no criteria under which to review the application, or we have no grounds for comment, uh, unless you wanna identify something that the Public Service Board may be interested in seeing or hearing, but would not actually go to the criteria.
Well, the million-dollar question is, is, um, have the commissioners, uh, having reviewed this application, seen anything that gives us cause for alarm? Or do we think that this is something we can send along comfortably?
Where is it?
It's in your packet.
No, no, the property. It is in West Browneboro. It's on Meadow Brook Road, which is a road that runs south from, uh, Route nine. It's in a early sixties period development of, you know, freestanding homes on relatively large parcels. It's on a corner parcel. The proposed installation is fairly close to the property boundary to the...
To the left?
To the north, the north boundary.
Is it creating, like, any nuisance, like, glare?
We, we, we asked for enough details, more than the Public Service Board would, to establish whether there's any potential mitigating factors. And as far as we can establish, there are none. Mr. Frichette actually has spoken with his neighbors, and they are, in large part, supportive of the installation, and no one has acknowledged, no one has identified any concerns.
Have they noticed on this meeting? The Butters? Did they get noticed?
Uh, no. One of the interesting aspects of the Public Service Board process is that the applicant has...
That's, that's all I wanna know, because I think we're gonna run out of time. And I think we should vote on it if nobody has major objections. Sorry.
That's alright.
Do we have major objections? Minor objections?
As long as his neighbors are okay with it, there's no objection from his neighbors, I'm fine. Sounds like they're worth a penny for what you're saying.
And I'm gonna call a question here so we can get on the public record.
Do we need a motion?
I think we do. If someone will make it.
I make the motion, if the guy isn't allowed, is...
Let me change it, we can do that.
Okay.
You know what, it doesn't have to be on television, you just have to do it. You don't, you're not, you're not constrained by the operation of the television channel. You're just constrained by open meeting law, and you're doing it. So, just go, you're on pace. The length of the tape is not our problem, it's their problem. Just do what you need to do.
You know, one of the things I realized, one of the things I realized joining this is that there's more people that watch this on TV...
That's okay.
Than I could ever imagine would be willing to sit through this. But I guess maybe in the comfort of your living room was better.
Well, you can eat, you can, you can pick your nose, you can do that.
They all start coming here in their bathroom, so...
All we need is a motion that determines that there's no grounds, that, that you, that the Planning Commission has no desire to comment, right? And we'll advise Mr. Frichette that, that, you know, the Planning Commission reviewed his application and found nothing to comment on.
Hey, Caroline.
The Planning Commission, um, what are we gonna do? We, we don't wanna comment?
We don't wanna comment.
We find, oh, we find no need to comment?
We decline, you decline the opportunity to comment on the application.
Correct. I, I make a motion that we, um, the Planning Commission has declined to give comment on Brian Frichette's application for, um, sewer system on his, on his property.
In a second.
All those, uh, any discussion? Here, none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
I have a comment. In the future...
About Mr. Frichette's...
No, in the future, uh, Rod said something about, "We don't have standing because it's not on conservation land." Maybe we wanna amend the master plan...
Yes.
So that we would have standing for other elements that we would like to review, other than that.
We, we could go ahead and do that, but the Public Service Board is, it's at the level of statute, and so, that's the only criteria that they recognize. We can comment on other things, it's just that we, that's the only criteria under which we get to review. And if that's not established by us, it's established by them.
Then, never mind.
I think, I mean, I think it's worth commenting if there's something that we're concerned about, but they don't have to give any weight for it.
So, so, did, did you say a Butters didn't need to be noted, didn't need to be noted? The owner, that, the applicant is asked on the form to indicate whether he has contacted the neighbors and whether there is any aesthetic impact, how he or she, how they address that as an applicant. There's no requirement that they have proved that, or show that they've notified the Butters. It's, it's not anything to do with the standard land use process that we would be familiar with. It's very, very, very...
Is that done by the P S B?
Yes. And so, to put it in really blunt terms, if you can sign a contract with Green Mountain Power for them to buy your power, as far as the Public Service Board is concerned, you have met the certificate of public good requirements. After that, it's just decoration on the cake as far as they're concerned. They're not really interested in hearing anything else. So, once you have a contract in place, that's it. And, and it's the utility that will also ensure that installation meets, you know, uh, standards to do with the safety of the installation. Because that's the, the other concern is the, is the danger associated with actually moving power in two directions.
Motion to it, Jared?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?